All right, good evening. This is Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. Board of Education meeting. The board has been in closed session since 6:00 for the purposes listed on the agenda. We have all board members present, and at this time we'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight we have the public hearing for the adoption of the 2018 certificate of levy. So you need to call the hearing to order. We have all seven board members present, and I will turn it over to Mr. Welton.
Okay, tonight we have the 2018 tax levy. It's based on the CPI that came out in January for the calendar year 2017, 2.1 CPI. We had the estimated levy in November. Tonight, we have the public hearing, and I will be filing the tax levy at the county building tomorrow. And the Cook County one, we file online now. And then in the end of March, we get the final EAV, final tax rates and extensions. And then June, the first half of the taxes are billed, and then September, the second half are billed. As I said, it's a 2.1 CPI. CPIs average 1.44 over the last five years. We are in a rising EAV situation, so the tax rate is decreasing. There's an inverse relationship between the EAV and the tax rate. This comes up more when the EAV is going down and the tax rate is going up, where more questions about that inverse relationship. But the tax rate increase/decrease does not equal the property tax bill increase. The 2018 levy, when we do the levy, we don't know what the EAV is going to do and where we are with new construction EAV. But the EAV really just impacts the tax rate. But new construction is exempt from the tax cap, so that we get additional money above the 2.1 CPI for new construction. So the last few years, new construction numbers, 20 million, 21 million, 33 million, 34, 38, and then last year, 49, 684. We're currently estimating, and it's just a preliminary estimate, 36 million from York Township, 7 million from Addison Township, and then 30 million estimated for the TIF I termination gets a rough estimate of 73 million. But since we really don't know what new construction EAV is, the levy includes an additional 20 million just in case we underestimate new construction. So this shows the final tax levy compared to last year's extension is a 5.71% increase for the operating capped funds, and the bond and interest fund is a 2.14% increase for an overall 5.32% increases in the levy. So the levy is based on a 93 million in new construction, but on the far right there we have the, well, we estimate, a 4.93, 3.16, and an overall 4.74% increase. But a homeowner with no new construction, with just existing property, will see just the CPI increase of 2.1 on their operating levy plus the 3.16% increase on the bond and interest. So an overall increase, most taxpayers with no new construction will see a 2.22% increase on a $400,000 house. That's a $136.25 increase. On a $300,000 house, it's $102.19. So that's it for the tax levy presentation.
Can we just point out, Chris, I mean, you had come here with this on a preliminary basis a month ago?
Yes.
Is that right? So we've seen this and asked several questions then as well, so I don't...
That's correct.
The idea that we don't have questions.
Any public comments just in regard to the 2018 levy? Okay. If not, then we will adjourn the adoption of the 2018 certificate of levy and reconvene to our regular meeting, and that will take us to shining star recipients. Do you want to start?
So Elizabeth Kawa, is she here tonight? Awesome. So you get to say really nice things about you, and you get to stand in the middle and face the cameras. So, welcome. So Elizabeth was nominated by Michelle Thompson. Michelle writes, "Elizabeth is not only a stellar teacher and great teammate, but she goes above and beyond to support the culture of the school and to provide extra opportunities for the students. Elizabeth is part of the PBIS team, and she works every month with her partner to plan for social-emotional lessons that can be used with Emerson families. She also created and runs her own A-Girls-on-the-Run Club where she trains 3rd through 5th grade girls to successfully run a 5K. She is part of the building math team, who help to reflect on instructional priorities and to provide professional learning to staff. Elizabeth also co-runs Fairy Tale Follies, which provides an opportunity for students to learn and perform a play. In addition to all the clubs and committees that she is on, she is always the first to volunteer to help. Each summer, she creates new hallway banners for teachers to identify their rooms. She also volunteers to help the principal-led assemblies when needed, and has helped organize Veterans Day recognition activity. Elizabeth is also in charge of family Math Night with PTA reps, and she volunteered to play in the wizard game. As you can see, she's a true shining star, and Emerson would not be the same without her." Thank you very much.
Katie Wasserman, Kristy Amendola, Kristen Boxall, Courtney Troutman, Hillary Simons, Rachel Olson, Christina Phipps, and Mandy Pachowski would all come up and stand in the middle. We'll just make you stand here for a while. So as you know, the Board of Education is pleased to present the Shining Star Award to the 2018 Ballot Initiative Committee. On November 6, 2018, Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 passed a $168.5 million referendum to make improvements at each of its 13 sites, as well as find a new location for the transition center. Led by Chair and District 205 parent Emily Bestido, our success would not have been possible without the swift and pervasive work of the Ballot Initiative Committee. Emily recently stated, "We appreciate the information that you have shared with the entire community," meaning the Board of Education. "We know that as a school district, you are required to stay neutral in this campaign, and you have. It's important to us that you know we have not remained neutral. We have been the opposite of neutral, and we have passionately campaigned since August with every spare hour we've had." Here is a listing of the Ballot Initiative's accomplishments. 5,958 doors were knocked on. 49 presentations were given. 25,834 pieces of mail were directly sent to likely voters. 14,500 walk cards were distributed. 70 local businesses hosted "We Support Our Schools" posters in windows. 1,225 yard signs were staked in the ground, and numerous advertisements were placed in newspapers, programs, bulletins, on Facebook, on YouTube, and on Google. Tonight, the presence of these individuals represents a community of volunteers who gave countless hours to the Ballot Initiative community to ensure that our students' future is brighter. And we are so proud to speak your names as our heroes and declare you among our most shining stars." So thank you. And I just have to say, you guys worked unbelievably hard and led this community through a challenging process. You did it well. You did it confidently. You did it passionately and proudly, and you never once faltered from what your goal was. And it was all for kids and the betterment of our community, and took the high road. And I know it was hard. We know it was hard. And it is a very proud moment for our entire community to recognize you. So thank you. So come get a certificate. I'm going to call you one at a time, and then you can shake hands. So Emily Bestido. Christina Phipps. Okay. The board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. I have no one on the list. Are there any public comments? Then we will move on to our presentations. First up is Dr. Henderson with standards-based reporting.
I'm very happy to be here tonight to talk to you about standard-based reporting. So as we do with all of our presentations, and I've done it for you several times, but just again as a reminder of our district vision, which is to have all of our students graduating college career and life ready, we will know that we've hit that vision when our students are able to demonstrate competency of the sixes. Also, as you have seen before, we have three priorities, which we call our learning and teaching priorities, and standards-based reporting really speaks to that first bullet when we talk about how we measure our district vision, strategies, and priorities. So tonight, really, my purpose is twofold. The first is to update you on the implementation of standards-based reporting at the elementary level at all eight of our elementary schools, and then to provide you an update on the planning for our 2019-2020 implementation at 6th grade. So I thought it would be helpful if we start by revisiting the rationale for change. I've talked to you about standards-based reporting a couple of times, but I think it's been about a year since we've done it at a full board meeting, so I thought it would, again, just help to revisit. So really, our grading and reporting practices have not undergone changes in decades, despite the ways in which we approach education and instruction being vastly different than they were decades ago. Our past elementary and current secondary grading practices no longer reflect our curriculum, which is standards-based, and they no longer reflect what we know to be best practice and how we provide feedback to students and families. Often, traditional letter grades account for several variables: mastery of academic content, behavior in class, extra credit, effort, and compliance. So two students who receive the very same letter grade may have a widely different mastery of the academic content. The grade itself doesn't actually provide a great deal of information to the student or to parents, and those are two of the primary stakeholders when we think about a report card and the purpose that it serves. A standards-based system of reporting aligns with our district curriculum, which is standards-based. Providing information to parents on a student's level of proficiency on each of the reporting standards will allow students and parents to have a clear understanding of a student's strengths in areas where they may need some additional support. So this slide reflects the current implementation plan for our K-8 schools. As you may remember, last year, we had a K-5 pilot at Hawthorne and Field Schools. This year, we've fully implemented standards-based reporting at all of our elementary schools and are currently in the planning process for 6th grade. And then you can see over the next three years. Next year, we'll implement it 6th grade, plan at 7th grade, implement at 7th, plan at 8th, implement at 8th. The reason we are doing it with a three-year roll-up, there are a few reasons. To try and implement it at all three grades is an overwhelming task when we think about the types of proficiency scales, reporting standards that all need to be created. Also, I think in learning and teaching, we believe that trying to introduce standards-based reporting to 8th grade students and families when they've not had any experience would just add to the anxiety and angst as they prepare for high school. So with the implementation plan that we've outlined, this allows, each year that we roll up, we're rolling up with families who already have experience in standards-based reporting. You'll notice that this is K-8 only, and your question may be, "What about our high school?" So currently, our work with the high school is in looking at what's best practice and research-based at high-performing high schools. For example, Dr. Cohen, Marion Limkey, myself, and some of the high school leadership went to a conference to learn about competency-based education, where you take your course standards and as soon as students demonstrate mastery, they move on to the next level of course. So courses are no longer boxed in by timeframe. They may not be a semester. They may be two semesters. As we looked at that, we really felt like that's not a good approach for our high school overall. It could be a good approach for students who are at risk of not graduating, but in general, to bring that to a full implementation at the high school, we believe that's not the right approach. So now we're looking at standards-based approach. We have some departments and courses within departments that grade on a standards-based system, and so we're working with their department chairs and leadership team this year to really look at what's going to work best for York and for our students. So first, I'm going to talk about K-5 implementation. One practice that last year we found to be very valuable with our pilot schools was having Hawthorne and Field partner up, become buddy schools. During different types of professional learning institute days, they would come together so that rather than just having my team of three 3rd grade teachers, I had another school's team of 3rd grade teachers, and it expanded the opportunities for teachers to collaborate, talk about different approaches to assessment, and they really found that collaboration valuable. So all of our elementary schools have buddied up this year, and they've spent time together at our August Institute Day, our October Institute Day, and are planning to at one of our spring late arrivals. Also, we have provided our teachers during each trimester a release time with their instructional coach, so they can review the reporting standards for the trimester, they can review the proficiency scales, which they use to measure student proficiency, and then also make sure that they are consistent and solid on the types of evidence and artifacts they'll be collecting throughout the trimester. We also have at K-5, they actually had their first meeting today, a steering committee. And the committee is comprised of teachers, instructional coaches, several principals, and our elementary assistant principal. They're working with our directors just to continue to refine and review our reporting standards, our proficiency scales, and the full implementation of standards-based reporting. One of the things, we've worked with two different consultants from the Marzano Research Group, and something that they will tell you over and over again, and that you see in the research and books on grading and reporting, that it's a process that evolves over years. So what your implementation looks like year one continues to refine year two, continues to refine year three. And when we get to the parent feedback, we'll even see how that is true with parents as well. So at the end of the first trimester, we first collected feedback from our teachers. We gathered feedback from every grade level at every school, asking them for feedback on the reporting standards, which are the standards you see on the report card, the proficiency scales, which are similar to a rubric where they give teachers the criteria to measure student proficiency. That feedback was synthesized by our directors, and they're using that to guide the work of the steering committee. We also surveyed all of our K-5 families, and the questions really focused on three areas. The first was operational, and that really centered on things such as, "I was able to find the report card in Power School." "The presentations given by my building principal helped me to understand standards-based reporting." Communication was clear, those types of questions. There was a section about the information itself that was on the report card, both providing detail on academic progress and information on learning behavior and learning habits. And then finally, there was a third section that was just open-ended, where parents could share any other thoughts that they had. You can see on the slide, we had a 14% response rate. We also did a survey last year at the end of the first trimester with the pilot schools. This is a higher response rate, however, it's always our hope to hear from as many families as possible, so I would have hoped for a higher response rate, but we really valued the feedback. The participation rate by school was fairly consistent, was spread out among all eight of our elementaries. And I looked at the data both district-wide and then broke it apart by school, and found it very interesting that the feedback was fairly consistent from school to school, not a wide variance. So to me, that gives me a lot of confidence in the results. So from the first two sections, I really looked at what were some of our successes and what were some of our opportunities for growth. I'm really proud and pleased that one of the great successes was the work our elementary school principals did, leading this priority in each of our schools. Many parents, even in the open-ended feedback, commented on how their principals did an excellent job helping them to understand. These presentations were consistent across the district. When we do our monthly grade level meetings with principals, we would use some of that time to create the presentations, create the talking points, so that we could ensure that parents across the district were getting the same information. I was also very pleased that a majority of parents stated that their students were able to identify their strengths and their opportunities for growth. That is an important focus of a report card, and sometimes at the elementary level, we forget that students are one of our stakeholder groups, and we get very focused on the information we're providing to parents. So I thought that was another great success. In the opportunities for growth, one thing that came through loud and clear, and again, sometimes we forget that our parents are busy people. They are often looking at school information on a mobile device while they are at a child's practice, while they are standing in line somewhere or waiting in a waiting room. And unfortunately, the Power School app does not provide an opportunity for them to access the report card. So that's feedback we need to provide to Power School, but it's not necessarily a variable that we're going to be able to control. But that came through in feedback over and over and over again. The second opportunity for growth is that student work wasn't going home on a regular basis with teacher feedback. That one really didn't surprise me. We saw that in the pilot last year. Standards-based reporting is a big shift for teachers. It's really a big change for them. And so many teachers felt that need to sort of hang on to all of the artifacts and evidence they had collected throughout the trimester just to build their sense of confidence when it came to giving those final ratings. What we saw with the pilot, that changed over the year. They became more comfortable, and they were sending work home with teacher feedback on a more regular basis, and that's something our principals are going to work with the teachers on. When it came to looking at the open-ended feedback, I felt like I was back in my dissertation when I was analyzing all of my interviews and all of my evidence that I collected, looking for themes and color coding. But there were some very, very consistent patterns that came through in the open-ended comment. And for me, that's really where sometimes you take the most important nuggets of feedback that you can respond to. One of the most common comments from parents is that they miss the personal narrative comments from teachers about students. What they were looking for are things that typically relate to a child's personality, to their demeanor, their temperament. As a parent, I understand that. I always wanted that information about my child as well. However, as an educator and an administrator, that's not the purpose of a report card. The report card really is about a student's learning progress. My other concern about it is, as a former principal, I had the opportunity to see in former districts some anecdotal narrative comments where there was a negative tone about a child, or something could be inferred, and that stays on the child's permanent record. That report card stays with them. So I really don't believe that's the place for it, but when we get into responding to the feedback, we'll talk about how I want to respond to that, because that's something that our parents are craving and wanting. Another pattern that emerged was a wide variance among teachers with regards to how often they're communicating to parents, what they're communicating to parents, and that wasn't necessarily one school versus another school, that was a variance within schools. So that's an opportunity of growth for us, that, again, I will get into. So that's an opportunity of growth for us, that again, I will get into when we respond. I think the part that was more concerning to me was the early conversations of academic concerns. There were many comments about being surprised at, at the marks their child was receiving. From my perspective, as both a parent and as an educator, report cards should never be a surprise. It's a collection, you know, it's an after-the-fact, it's a reporting of past performance, but if they're concerned, those are things that need to be talked to with parents sooner, rather than waiting until report card time. And then finally, the last pattern was really about some philosophical differences some of our parents have about the purpose of a report card, grading, and homework in general. There were some comments, some parents would like to see letter grades as early as second grade. Some parents want to be able to compare their child relative to their peers. So those are things that I call philosophical differences. Those aren't approaches we believe are the best ones to take for our students. When it came to homework, I, I found the comments very interesting. Some parents really support the way that we have moved away from homework in elementary school, other than reading. What they were missing was the fact that the homework helped them have a better understanding of what was going on in class. So you have to kind of wade through it, it's not so much homework that they want, they want to feel that they have a good handle on what's going on in the classroom. So as we talk about ways to respond to the feedback, the principal and I, the principals and I started talking in December, and we reviewed this at our December principals meeting, we really found a lot of great value in the feedback that the parents gave to us. So one of the things that we'll see our principals discussing with their teachers, are sending that work home regularly, not holding on to it until the end of the trimester, and making sure there's teacher feedback on it, so that teachers, or I'm sorry, students and parents understand how they can grow. We want to talk about some guidelines for expectations, common expectations about communication. How often should teachers be communicating with families? What types of things should they be communicating? We want to continue opportunities for dialogue with parents to increase their understanding of standards-based reporting. Some of the comments from Field and Hawthorne parents indicated that with time, you know, it's their second year experiencing standards-based reporting, and they felt they had a better handle on things. They felt like it was a smoother process. But we don't want to just bank on time. However, we're struggling, to be honest with you, to figure out the best way to reach the parents. We had at least one principal who offered open sessions during parent-teacher conferences, once the parents had the first report card in hand, to come and talk through and have questions answered, and they had zero attendees. So that wasn't, that wasn't meeting parents' needs. So our principals are all going back to their PTAs to see if they can elicit some feedback about what would best meet their needs. So that's an area we want to continue to, to explore. And then we want to explore ways to build in student and teacher reflection on learning goals, progress, to be able to address that need that parents are saying they want more information about their child, but not necessarily things that belong on a report card. The first trimester was a little bit easier, because we have parent-teacher conferences, so they have that opportunity for face-to-face dialogue. But second and third trimester, we don't have parent-teacher conferences. So last week, I happened to be at an elementary school, sitting with one of their grade-level teams, and I brought this up to them, and I said, "What, what are some ideas that you have?" And they talked about a reflection sheet at the end of each grading period, that we go home with a report card, that would have a student reflection, as well as teacher comment, that might be able to provide some of that information that parents are craving, that, that isn't necessarily about academic progress.
Mary, before you go on to sixth grade, two, two things.
Yes, I was actually going to stop and ask them if they had questions about elementary.
Okay, yeah, so two things before you do that. The first is, number one, nice synopsis on a lot of really, really hard work. I mean, there was a lot of stuff that went into this. But you focused a lot on the parent feedback and, and that piece of it. Can you also please explain the process that's going on with all of our people internally to continue to improve our, you know, collective understanding of how, how to improve the process, communicate the information to parent? Like, we have some ongoing committees and different work that, that I think they, they would find interesting to know?
Sure. So I mentioned the steering committee, and that they had met for the first time today. So one of the things that they did was take a look at the reporting standards. So those are the standards that are actually on the report card. They went through them K-5, really going back for another deep dive, now that they've worked with them, to say, "Okay, are we, are we hitting across the grade levels all of the most critical standards that we want to report on to parents? Are there too many, too few? Have we hit the right amount?" With our social studies and science, there are very few standards on the report card right now, because those are two areas that are in the curriculum development process. So that's, that we expect, but really looking hard at the literacy and math standards to see if K-5, we are hitting the most critical aspects of the standards. And then also looking at those proficiency scales to say, "Okay, are they detailed enough, telling us what we need to do to measure student mastery of the standard?"
And so then, the only other thing I would say is that, just to make sure that we make some connections, and don't look at this just as, as the report card in and of itself, which, you know, for a lot of parents, obviously, parent-teacher conferences and the report card are a big deal. But if you go back to a couple of years ago, when we were really emphasizing learning targets, and when we were talking about students starting to take ownership of their learning, and the school improvement planning process, and the increase in formative assessment, and, and all, all of this is, is interrelated in ways that I think, you know, people can, can start to see, but I didn't want people to lose track of that just in isolation. And I'll give you one example, of one of the principals I happen to be evaluating this year in their school improvement plan, they, they have one of their goals is, is building in this ongoing student reflection on, on their work, with, with setting goals toward moving toward their, their standard attainment and things like that. So there's a lot of these things that are going on, that aren't just about the report card, that are related to kind of the overall big ideas. I thought I'd just flip that out there, so.
Yeah, thank you. Now, that's, it really does bring kind of all the work we're doing together. When you talk with principals, when you talk with teachers, the conversations that teachers are having have taken on a whole different, whole different content, because they are very focused on the standards, how students are performing on the standards, what do we need to do when we, how can we better target instruction, when we have some students who may not be hitting a standard? So it is really helping them focus and target their instruction and their support of students. So before we go on to sixth grade, I thought it would be better if we maybe stop here and see if you have questions about the implementation at K-5.
Shannon?
This is great. I know we've come a long way.
Yes.
So I just had two observations. One is the amount of material going home. I don't know if that's all about stan, or because of standards-based grading, it's, it's a lot of it is moving to Google Classroom, and if you want to check what your child's doing, you have to log on to their Google Classroom. I don't think standards-based grading has, has changed the amount of material that could come home or not.
It could be a mixed bag.
It's just a trend towards more electronic work.
Yes, absolutely. And that was noted in a few of the comments as well, that, you know, some of it is a shift for, for parents, but it's on us to help them understand, here are places where you can find your student work.
Right. And the other observation I had is, for the standards, you might only have five standards in one year for math, so at report card time, there are two standards. So that seems like very little, because there's two, two numbers. So you're looking at your child's progress, there are, there's two numbers to look at. So there, it's, it's great, I, I'm, I like standards-based grading, but it's, over three months, there are two numbers to look at on the report card for a certain subject.
Yeah, because some of those standards, particularly at math, they are very, they, they encompass deep concepts. So yes, you, you are correct with that.
I want to recap, we're heading in the right direction.
Oh, yes.
Two observations I'm noticing over, over the past semester.
Thank you.
I too wanted to comment, this is wonderful. Thank you very much for this presentation and this update. I particularly appreciate how you got the feedback and how you're responding to the feedback. And I think I wanted to point out that there's a lot of changes that are occurring here. As Shannon pointed out, it's, it's the Google Classroom. It's, it's our age where we now look at everything on our mobile phones, and now we can't look at it on the mobile phone. So we've got a lot of changes that are going on simultaneously. I very much appreciated the, the response on how do we get this feedback back to the parents, back to the parents with all these changes. I know I don't have an answer, I'm glad that you've got the teachers that are working on it, because I think that's really important, to keep those parents engaged, so they know what's going on in the classroom. So please, thank everyone that's working on that group.
I will.
And tell them, keep, keep, keep finding ways to keep the parents engaged. And I don't know, this is a sidebar, most homes now have internet and all of those different things, but I'm wondering if people can't get it on the mobile, their mobile device, and they don't have a computer or a laptop. Again, thoughts and ideas on how they would be able to get that information?
Yes, so for, there is a report that our principals ran in Power School, and four parents, I'm going to forget the detail, but they were able to identify who did not access Power School, and they sent a printed copy of the report card home to those families.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I also ask, it's, it may be coming up in Beth's presentation, but I think that we are going to be better able to have information formatted in ways that people are going to be able to, to see it on their phone. Am I, am I right to predict that?
When it comes to our website, yes, it will be very much device-agnostic. You'll be able to move it, position it, access information in different ways, similar to how you do on your cell phones every day.
The problem is, this one is accessed through a Power School app, not through our district app, so it's, this would have to be a fixed Power School would make, versus something that we can do on our end. Yes, there are other providers. Yes, there are other providers. I, I don't, I don't know all the functionality of that, but yes. Yeah.
Karen?
I have a little bit of a logistical question, and why I'm asking it is to get a sense of how are we transitioning from, you know, to staff even, of this new way? So are we downloading, basically, or uploading the content, the, what you said, standards? The sequencing, the proficiency scales, and then they are just saying, "Here's where that student fits"?
So the standards are in Power School, in the report card format, in the gradebook format. At elementary, most of our elementary teachers do not use an electronic gradebook throughout the, throughout the trimester, and we don't require that. What they also have, every grade level has a, a teacher's guide that has, again, the reporting standards listed, it has all of the proficiency scales, which is what they use to measure an individual student's mastery of that standard. So they have all of that information provided to them.
So the way that we are deploying it to staff is through the PLCs, institute days?
Through PLCs, institute days, work with their instructional coaches, it's ongoing. Every, definitely every month where we have two late starts, the second one is always dedicated to standards-based reporting, and then other work, depending on what a particular school needs, takes place during PLCs, special time with the coach, staff meetings, et cetera.
So that's staff. Now, from a parent's standpoint, you were talking about, you know, a principal had a session during conferences, and no one was in attendance. So how did parents find out about this?
So that was a follow-up session. The way we started was last, I believe it was last March, all of our elementary schools threw a PTA meeting, but advertised to all parents ahead of time that it would be about standards-based reporting, shared a common presentation. That same presentation was done at curriculum night. You know, some did it before, in the middle, at the end, they did a couple of different presentations to hit parents, and have had follow-up conversations at different PTA meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one thing. How do you, and this is a little bit of the philosophical thing, but how do you, are you, do teachers see a motivation issue with kids, whether they're more motivated or less motivated as the grades, you know, as they're just working towards a standard?
So that's a great question, because when, and in some of the parent feedback about philosophical, some parents believe that grades are great motivators. Research says that grades, grades aren't motivators. In a standards-based system, you shift from being focused on the grade to being focused on learning. And while a three on a, on a standard represents you've hit the grade-level expectation, there are opportunities for students to exceed that expectation. One of the, one of the visuals we use with kids and with parents when we're introducing it is the concept of riding a bike. And, you know, training wheels with someone behind you would be a one. Training wheels on your own would be approaching the standard. When you can ride the bike on your own, you've met the standard. But then there is jumping ramps and popping a wheelie and, I don't know, doing all kinds of other crazy things, that's exceeding the standard. So our teachers provide those opportunities to kids, so that they can continue to go on, once they've demonstrated mastery. All right, we ready for sixth grade? Okay. So sixth grade, we are in our planning year. Our work with teachers, we've structured it to take place all throughout the school year, so that we can give them some learning in bite-sized chunks, allow them time to go back, reflect, process, ask questions, and then come back for more discussion and learning. In August, pardon me, it was one of our first sessions with teachers, and we ended our time that August Institute Day with an opportunity to have them share with us their greatest hopes and their greatest fears about this change. It was really great for me to gather all of, you know, all of these chart papers and get it all organized. There really was widespread philosophical agreement about a standards-based reporting system. As with any change, one of their greatest sources of angst and anxiety was the logistical and implementation pieces. But that's, that's a great place to start. When you have the philosophical agreement, you can then really focus on how we are going to, to implement. Another highlight of the work this year with sixth grade, I think is a celebration, is the wide range of staff members that are involved. It's not just department chairs and people who have formal leadership roles, but also inviting all teachers who have an interest in participating in the development of the work to have that opportunity. So our, our implementation at middle school will look a little different than elementary. Elementary, we are pure standards-based reporting. Where we used to give letter grades in fourth and fifth grade, we do not do that anymore. At the middle school, we are going to use what's called a hybrid model. The rationale for that is that we know in our community that very early into the middle school years, our parents are already getting, you know, a heightened awareness and some angst about high school, and what that means for them. We know that in high school, parents are quickly and carefully looking at college. And as of today, most colleges are still relying on a GPA. So we feel like the shift to standards-based reporting is important enough and valuable enough, that using a hybrid model will help it be more palatable to the community, we believe. And so that's why we are going to do that. Let's look at what is currently in place when we are reporting progress at the middle schools. So right now, on students' report cards, they get letter grades for core content, world language, band orchestra course. They get an E, which means exceeds expectations, an M, meets expectations, and N, does not meet expectations, for unified arts and PE. Even though there are letter grades on the report card, there is no GPA listed on the report card. There are two learning behaviors. There are two learning behaviors reported on at middle school right now. Work completion and on-task behavior. It's described as student engagement, but as you really read the descriptors that are listed on the report card, it's really about being on task during class time. If you think back to our district vision, where we're really talking about the six Cs, work completion and on-task behavior is really not an accurate representation of what we are saying as a district, we feel are the most critical attributes for student success. So what you'll see when we shift to a standards-based report card, there will be, for each content area, their reporting standards with where the student is performing, either a one, a two, a three, or a four. Each core content area and any of the electives that are a semester-long or longer, so world language, project lead the way, band orchestra choir, will also have an overall letter grade based on how many of the standards the student has demonstrated proficiency. There will continue to be no GPA reported. And then finally, there will be process standards. Process standards are what we call those learning habits, learning behaviors. Important, but they don't receive letter grades. The process standards will be focused on our, some learning behaviors and competency of the six Cs. Some of the six Cs we can measure through specific academic standards, specifically some ones on critical thinking, communication, but there are some others that aren't really evident in the academic standards. So beginning in January, Mary Ann, myself, Dr. Cohen, will be working with the middle school department chairs to develop those process standards so that they will reflect what we have said in our district vision that we believe is most important for student So when you think about the current report card for middle school and the standards-based report card for middle school, what parents will be getting is quite a bit more detailed information. Right now, you would just get letter grades, EMNs. What you'll see is not only letter grades for those core content areas, but how their child is doing on each of the reporting standards. So the next two slides will give you an overview of the work that we're doing with our middle school teachers. We started in August with an introduction and really a work by content departments to determine their priority or reporting standards. In September, we looked at sample report cards from other districts that use standards-based reporting. Some of our fifth grade teachers from Field and Hawthorne provided some testimonials via video that our teachers were able to see. And they also looked at a teacher guide so they could get a sense of what the proficiency scales will look like when they're developed and what type of support they will have. In October, we introduced them to proficiency scales, had them create some, had them work with some, with student work. After the first quarter, and really most of the work started in late December, early December, teachers, along with the directors from learning and teaching, are writing the first quarter proficiency scales. So those measures of student mastery are being created by our teachers under the leadership of our directors. As we move into the second semester, they'll continue working on the proficiency scales. As I shared with you just a moment ago, department chairs will work with district leaders on creating the process standards. We have two late arrivals in February, March, and April. Some of the things that we will be looking at, we started the conversation last week, consistent practices with redoing and retaking, retaking assessments or redoing work and how that fits in a standards-based system. We ran out of a little bit, we ran out of time last Wednesday to really tackle the topic of homework at the middle school, but they know that that's an important topic that we want to come back and revisit. Where does that fit in a standards-based system? What amount of time is reasonable to expect in the life of a middle school student? This is the ripe time to really tackle that important conversation. We've tackled it at elementary. It's really time to tackle it at our secondary schools. At our April, second late start, we're going to have our sixth grade teachers have the opportunity to meet with fifth grade teachers by theater pattern so they can talk about how the standards-based process has worked, where kids are sort of leading off, leaving off, what types of tips and tricks do they have. At our January Institute Day, we have two of our instructional coaches, the coach from Field and the coach from Hawthorne, will be presenting sessions for middle school teachers on tips and tricks for successfully implementing standards-based reporting. And then in the spring, we will do parent information meetings for our fifth grade families coming in. Even though they will have been experienced with standards-based reporting, as you can see, it's going to look a little bit different at middle school. And so we, myself and the three principals, will be doing parent information meetings so that parents can feel well-versed. And then we'll repeat those in the fall. So if you have questions about sixth grade implementation, or the planning, rather.
Yeah?
When I tried to explain to people why we're going from this real strong philosophical approach in grades K through five, and then sixth grade, yeah, we're going to hybrid it. Can you give me the soundbite for why we're hybridizing what seems like the new, the best practice, the results of research, and all of a sudden, it's almost like as we prepare kids to leave our system, we have to go back to this content-based system?
Yes, right. No, I completely understand that. It is very common at secondary levels that they use that hybrid model because we do not have enough colleges and universities that are ignoring the GPA. There is some. There are few universities. Certainly, we have kids who are homeschooled who don't have a GPA. But by and far, the system our parents are most comfortable with now is a GPA. Some of our middle school teachers say, as parents get used to this, can we shift away from grades? From our standpoint, we would love that. But we feel right now that parents would be most comfortable with the change if they can continue to see letter grades and something they can connect to.
Just philosophically, isn't content a part of competency? I mean, the letter grades used to be about acquisition of content. And now we're going to skills and competency, but isn't some of that knowledge an element of competency?
And there is, there is some content knowledge that is in the reporting standards, yes. Traditional grades, while their purpose was to report content or skill acquisition, they really were amalgamation of behavior, effort, extra credit. They weren't purely a reporting of skill acquisition or content knowledge.
Do you think the learning behaviors are actually a more important element of, or should be a more important element than the content-based?
Dr. Mary Henderson's viewpoint?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
That's what I want to get to.
Yes, we believe the six Cs are what will set our students up for success in the real world. We do believe that, and that's why we want to move toward including those on the report card.
Yeah.
That's, you know, while what we are doing with moving to standards-based is best practice and refining what is good practice, really looking at the six Cs, that is forward-thinking. That is, that's future-focused. And yes, that is, we 100% believe those are important.
You know, as a board member, I'm really grateful that you're going down this path. This is really good. This is really good. And I'm glad that we are trying to be leaders as we try to be part of the leading edge of reform, if you will.
Yes. Dr. Meyer, did I capture?
No, everything that, I'm not trying to interject anything into your previous comment. I wanted to build on something that John just said. What has been identified nationally, the AAASA came out with the top 25 innovative school districts in the country. There was one in Illinois, we weren't it. So you know how I felt about that, of course. But the fact is, is that what we learned about is that they have three characteristics in common, and one of them is that they all have some type of standards-based reporting system. And I think a lot of that has to do with the idea of moving toward a more personalized approach toward learning and students being able to take ownership of their learning and those types of concepts. But also, in addition to that, we did have a local district here that's a high-performing district, that's one of our neighbors, where that community shot down the concept of moving towards standards-based reporting a couple of years ago. And so I'm very proud that this community and this board is allowing us to move toward the path of thinking more innovatively because that is, you know, it's going to be a process for us to get this all down. But as we move through that process, it's going to be much better for our kids in the long run. And I just appreciate that last statement that you made about valuing the idea of being innovative and forward-thinking.
Karen?
And I just want, I want to clarify. We are saying that the content is very important. We're also saying that there's skills around the content that are equally important and that what studies show will determine longer-term success of a student, person, et cetera.
Correct. And what employers are looking, the types of skills and competencies that employers are looking for are more closely related to the six Cs.
Well, and I would say even in my career, you know, it was computer science and we had these sort of things way back, you know, for, since I was 19. So I do think that it's important. And then what it was is, you know, you met your goal and how did you accomplish that?
Right.
How did you perform against it?
Right.
In leadership and critical thinking, decision-making, teamwork, and all the things that we're saying. So I just want us to be clear that we believe in both.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, and this, I don't want to go off track, but it is on here, so I want to, so homework.
Mm-hmm.
So you talked about, you know, there were some philosophical, in the feedback, there were some philosophical.
In the elementary feedback, yes.
In the elementary feedback. And then you're going to talk about it as you, in sixth grade. So I guess my question is, and I don't even know if you can answer this yet, but, you know, so it's kind of a model at the elementary that reading is the homework and, you know, beyond that is a little bit maybe up to parents or if there's a skill. Okay, so then you move to middle school and I don't know what that model is going to look like or if you even know that yet. But one thing that I, I guess, as this work goes on, want to be aware, want you to make sure that, you know, we're not setting our kids up for they don't have homework, then there's kind of sort of homework, and then they hit high school and whoa.
Well, and the conversation doesn't need, the conversation can't stop at middle school. We have to talk about high school as well. It's our entire secondary level. While the research changes a little bit as kids get older about some positive impact of homework on student achievement, we need to be very mindful about what types of homework we are assigning. If we are asking kids to invest time in it, then it also warrants substantive teacher feedback to help them to grow. There's opportunities to sort of flip the types of things we are asking kids to do where they're maybe watching content delivery, you know, a mini lecture or a mini lesson as homework, and then really investing that time in the classroom, in the practice, under the guidance of a teacher. So we need to be mindful of what, how, how much, what it all looks like in the purpose, in the big scope of what kids are being asked to do. You know, Carrie, you and I have talked about how, as kids are applying for college, it's not just about how many AP and dual-credit classes you're taking, but also some of that, those experiences outside of school and developing passions. If we are saying we value that, but we're loading up kids with three and four hours of homework a night, we're sending a very mixed message.
Well, and just too, there is a value. I mean, there's, somewhere along the way are those skills that are taught by, in homework of.
Yes.
Independence and time management and.
Right.
All those things. So I guess just, it's, I don't want to open up a whole other discussion on homework first, but I guess I just want to make sure we don't set our kids up in this process.
Yes.
To go, we've said, you know, there's one extreme and then they hit high school and it's a big adjustment as it is and.
Right.
And they're not prepared, so.
Shannon?
To go along with that, it appears that we're becoming more child-centric at the younger grades, but that has not translated into the high school. It's not kid-centered. And we really want to.
We have to tackle that, yes.
Have those conversations in many different ways.
Yes.
Okay.
No, we, as district administration building leaders, we believe in that. And I, and really, when I have conversations with individual teachers, they do too. We just, we have to get everyone into the conversation and on the same page.
Jim?
I have two things. One, kind of curious. You said that teachers were trying to hang on to work so that they could make their end of the grading period evaluation. But at the same time, the idea that, as I think of standards-based grading, that it's not on a time schedule. It's not when the teacher assesses it. It's, does the kid understand it by the end of the grading period?
Well, and even not just the end of the grading period. The end of the grading period, they may not have mastered something yet, but our teachers then continue to work with them and give them additional opportunities. So the end of a grading period is not the end-all, be-all.
And if parents want some feedback on what their kids understand and don't understand, what I don't understand is why teachers are hanging on to this early work and not sending it home.
I really believe it was with the newness of this approach and would parents, would, a question of would parents trust that the teachers really understood how their child was performing? I know it doesn't quite make sense, but it was, I really feel when we talk to teachers, it was just an anxiety thing.
Interesting, okay. And then my second question is, what Shannon was talking about, is there any hope for current high schoolers or is that not going to happen until the current sixth graders roll through?
No, that is, it is not, it is not dependent on going into sixth grade next year. In January, when we start the work with, when we start the work on the learning behaviors with middle school department chairs, we are starting the conversations on some grading practices and discussions of homework with our high school department chairs.
We're also, Jim, going to build that in, going back again to the characteristics of innovative districts. They're recognizing the significance of behavioral health and it's one of, again, one of the three things that are shared common traits that these districts have is that they focus on that. And we have talked with some outside groups and we've started some conversation internally about how do we get a community conversation about these things off the ground? And I think we're starting to get a little bit closer to some ideas about how to get that started. But I do think that, that it will be, if we can tie that conversation to a larger picture, to some of these other things in a comprehensive way so we don't just get a bunch of people fighting about homework, it might be a more productive conversation. But I think that irrespective of the standards-based and how long that takes to become fully implemented, that other conversation can't wait.
I agree.
Margaret, oh, gosh. Oh, is my timer?
That was exciting.
Margaret.
Not so easy.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate this hybrid model. I, and I'll state why. One, I think we are absolutely going in the right direction. And the other piece is, sometimes when you're leading the curve, you have to realize where you are in the rest, where you are in the rest of the world. And I think that's why, you know, the whole idea of, you know, having this community conversation and bringing the community on, and sometimes the community is not just our school district. Because as you mentioned, we're talking about what colleges are doing, and how do you influence what colleges do, so there's not this big gap. I mean, we could have the most kid-centric community unit school district, and they get into college, and all of a sudden, the world has changed. You know, how do you make sure that they're ready and adjusted for that? So I am very appreciative that we're leading the curve, and the same time understand what the rest of the world is doing. So thank you for keeping that balance.
Thank you. John, you've been very patient, did you just?
No, I mean, isn't it really about student engagement?
It is.
It's about making sure that by the time they're done with high school, they don't hate school.
Right.
That it's still a place of learning, still a place they love to go to learn.
You are exactly right, and
And that's
And if I don't master something, if I don't learn something in this artificial timeframe, all is not lost.
Yeah.
There's going to be opportunities to continue learning, and respect the fact that, that time, you know, learning is a continuum, and it doesn't happen at the same time for all kids.
And to have the motivation not be reported.
Right.
To have the motivation come from within.
All right, thank you. All right, you're up.
Website design. Yes, I feel like I should open, then bear witness, I am a preacher's kid, but in the words of my father, I won't hold you long, I promise. I know. How many times did he miss that mark? Oh, gosh, to the board, to my colleagues, and to what remains of the audience, good evening, and thank you so much for indulging me in a conversation about the coming of the new elmhurst205.org. When you hired me in July or so, in my interview, I do remember you asking me a couple of things, and one is how well do I multitask? Because we had a number of projects coming up that were actively going. One was the referendum, the other is, can you also do something about our website? Well, I will say, part of that reaction is, it's, we've had this discussion ongoing throughout the evening, it's how we consume information. It has changed. When we started with our current provider, the existing website provider, it was 2007. That doesn't seem like a long time ago, but in terms of the way we consume technology, the way we consume information, and the way we use these things, about that time, this device entered the market. And now we sit here all day doing, holding it this way, holding it that way, processing information in the lines with our students while we wait for them in the grocery store, in the oddest of places, trying to access information that really does determine the way our children's education goes. So we're talking about the flagship piece of our communication strategy in the comms and PR department, a website. When I began 18 years ago or so, it was a luxury if you had a website. Today, it is essential. It has replaced what we know the Yellow Pages to be. Everyone goes there first. If there's something that I want to know about you, about your information, I'm headed to your website. It has to be tactile, it has to be living, it cannot be a museum. So that was one of the charges that you put us through, and said, okay, how do we make this interactive? How do we begin to make this something that we can actually use? Again, it's not that what we had in 2007 was bad, but we grew up. Everyone grew up in the way they consumed information. So behind the rationale, as you see on the screen, we needed something that would be ADA compliant. Not only do we have to make sure that the bulk of individuals are able to use it, but individuals such as my sister, who happens to be deaf, how would she consume information on a website like this? EEO compliant, also goes with being ADA, working with ADA compliance. Aesthetics, what does it look like? We often say it's really the information that counts, but truthfully, how you present it makes people wonder whether they want to come back or stick with you or not. So it really does have to be a clean design. We consume information in images and icons now, not necessarily always in words. Will it be flexible in terms of its layout? Will we have something operationally efficient that we can use? Can it be easily uploaded? Will you have to wait and wait and wait for information to come to you? How can you manage it behind the scenes? Those who have to work with the information, will you have to labor with it on the back end to get it to you? Will it be a seamless login? Meaning that the numbers that you have, or the login that you have, can it be used in multiple places? Not, or will you have to hold multiple passwords and IDs for this? Platform agnostic, what do we mean by that? It must be responsive, so it must go on any platform, any piece or device that you use, whether it be your laptops, whether you are on your mini, whether you're on your smartphone, or whether you're sitting at a traditional desktop. Will it function? Will it move with you and adjust? Also, improved access to information. How do we make sure that our emergency notifications, what we have right now, is if we close, if we did anything, it becomes a news item. You have to look for it. With our new system, it will be what we call a pop-up. Once you get on the screen, you cannot go past "go" until you see that message. It can not only be used for emergencies, but if you had immunization requirements, if you had other pieces of news that people have to see, a pop-up would be there, and you'd have to click it off in order to be able to move on. So those were some of the charges that we had coming into it. Currently, our timeline, where are we? I won't read all of it to you, but take it in chunks. Right now, we're in something called content migration. It is akin to moving. The boxes are in the house, now you got to make it pretty. So it is a very big process for us. So we have all of our pages with content on them, now we have to massage that inwardly, internally, and begin to make that something that people can easily understand and use. Also, moving on into January and February, what we will experience will be what we call a soft launch. It's important that those behind the scenes are able to use the website, know how it functions, tell us where the bugs and the kinks might be, so we can work that out before we put it to a major launch. And what we're hoping for is to actually launch it spring break 2019. Seems like it's a long way away, but nope, we're taking it weeks at a chunk, so we'll be there before we know it, if all holds true. Contingencies. Again, the soft launch is about, is part of the contingency plan, that get time to work out that transition, work out the kinks. Teachers have time to set up and perfect their classroom pages if they so like to have them, they have that ability even more in this system, and that the community would get its sneak peek and present FAQs, all of those types of things. And then what happens if the inevitable happens, or the unforeseen happens? We still have access to what we call our legacy system. It's a fancy word for saying we still have School Loop on the hook, in the background running. So if there is a delay, which we don't foresee, but if there is a delay, you still have access to that, or if you need to convert a page, or you can't remember what was on a page, you still have that original content available to you. So now it's time for the bells and whistles. My driver over this way. All right. So this is the backend of what we would see working in the system every day. It's called a composer view with Final Site, our new company. And what you can see on the bottom of the screen are different types of devices. So you see how it will switch and be responsive, the thing that we would love Power School and School Messenger and all those other things to be able to do. We're all headed that way. And it will even, the way we consume information, if you're holding it in horizontal or vertical, it will respond to you, no matter which way you have the device going. So with that, and a drum roll, we're going to go into the live view of the website. One of my favorite features is the top portion, you'll see that grand Elmhurst banner there. That is something that will repeat throughout the buildings, so we're building a suite of websites. They brand and go together. There will be the school colors in the header, but what you may not see is a logo at this point. Remember that ray of light, that star? That sometimes we say, well, what? What was meant by that? And all logos go through this particular transformation. There is some discussion on whether we will go with that, or stay with that particular image, or whether we will do something different. So each of our websites bears the word and the font of the school, but it makes room and opportunity for us to rebrand or refresh logos as we go along. Also, in that top dark blue portion of the header, you'll see a "find it fast" category, that we also have access to analytics now, that will be able, we can program what we want in those spots based on information. Across the navigation bar, you'll see those familiar pieces that were, the familiar headers that were available to us in School Loop, things that the community already knew as terms of headers. You don't want to take people so fast that they cannot adjust. You'll also see, as Dave is going across, the dropdown menu is no longer a long list, but it's what they call a sandwich board menu, or a sandwich menu, where you're using columns, so that you're not always taking your eye up and down, you can see things going across. Hey, I've been there, I've been Vanna before, absolutely. And if you can scroll down into the website a little bit more, you'll see the picture portion, hold right there for me, right there. You'll see the picture portion. Branding is very important. When you go to many websites today, you'll begin to see picture-driven images, what's going on, how does a place make you feel? You want that emotion out of a person when they come to your website. Does it say engagement? You can also begin to caption and talk about the different things that you stand for, such as being a national leader in education. What do we, what are our themes, what are our pieces? And we can do that in pictures and also in video now. In the section beneath, you have a space to be developed that can hold facts, that can hold icons, that can hold information regarding the district, demographics that we can pull out of there, and that space can grow. We can add more to that space, and it can ebb and flow throughout the time that we're using it. Moving further down into the homepage, you see elementary, middle, and I think our, in high school, I think our LNT department will be very happy with this. This is a space that we can continue to use. Right now, it houses, or will house, the addresses, the street numbers, all of those things for our schools. However, it can morph and form. If we wanted to do school profiles, if we wanted to do other information there, we can have that as well as links to our schools within those pieces, within those three tabs. And those three pieces appear on every school website. Every school can use those spaces as they see fit. Going further down, the news section of the website is there, and we get to update that, and certainly every school will have that feature as well. So you'll have prominent pieces of news rather than straining to see what's going on in some of the schools. Further down at the bottom, a calendar. This is a Google-driven calendar. Behind the scenes, when you plop it into a Google Calendar, it automatically updates what's going on on the front page, or the front page of a website. At the bottom in the footer will be your privacy information, your accessibility information, I believe we're going to put some EEO information down in that portion, as well as access to the websites and to our social media. And for each school, your social media will be accessed there. It will not just be the district's information going down there, it will be the specific school social media pieces going. And for just a final look, if you take me to York, please, what a school website will look like, much different than it looks now. Very clean, built with the school colors, looks very similar to the homepage, but will be very specific to each school. You have a picture pane, as well as your menu headers, you have the mission of the school. As you're going further down, you'll see the news section appearing again as you continue to scroll downward, and that's the theme scrolling, we scroll today. In the past, it was thought that if you didn't have it all above the fold, people missed it, but we're in a habit of scrolling. See that, and as you're going down into the footer, again, repeating that branding and color information, as well as social media. So with that, questions?
Looks great, it's a lot of work.
Final Site actually helped make it a lot easier.
All right, Karen?
Thanks for the preview.
No problem.
I'm assuming that the transition centers with high school and early childhood is with elementary?
We can pop those out as well if we need to.
Thank you.
Jim?
How's the search function? Because on our present website, it's abysmal.
It's abysmal. Well, it'll be better than abysmal. And that's, no, part of the, part of the charge when we went to Final Site was, talk to us about your search capability. We needed something more robust, more active, that can really pull through and really function, and help us build some search engine optimization, things like that. So it is pretty powerful, so we'll put it to the test.
So you're saying it works?
It works.
John?
You talked about most important news being there first when you get there. School closing, emergency at a school, exam schedule, those things that people want immediately. Where does that? You say you have to go through it to get there.
It will plop right into the middle of the screen.
Very good. And that is
It's called a pop-up.
much appreciated.
You're very welcome. Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll leave the clicker there.
All right, okay, we'll wait after time. Okay, Todd, summer maintenance projects.
Good evening. As we started looking at developing our summer maintenance projects that we have, we had to step back and look at all the things that we've included into facilities master plan, kind of back those things out, then look what's remaining, and look at the condition of everything that we have. And also, we needed to look at what system we have in place to make sure that when we put this investment, $168.5 million into the schools, how are we going to maintain that moving forward, so we don't fall into the same trap that we are right now? And as we started looking at, we came up with a couple of issues out there that we do have. When we have the issues, some of the facilities issues is looking at assets that we have out there right now. There's really four different areas that I have. Some issues that we need to address to get us to developing that summer capital plan, along with a preventive maintenance plan and a work order system, to maintain the longevity of our equipment in our buildings, and the buildings themselves. Most of that is the detailed asset inventory, kind of looking at the equipment we have out there, what type of flooring finishes we have, the age of our equipment, where it's located, when it was last replaced, detailed maintenance work logs on those pieces of equipment, looking at a preventive maintenance plan, which we really don't have too much of a preventive maintenance plan. We do some preventative maintenance out there, with yearly inspections, changing filters and unit vents, air handling units and things like that, some parking lot ceiling, but there's really not a documented, established preventative maintenance plan that is very routine that we do. Electronic files of our plans, looking to develop some of this lifecycle analysis with this capital, summer capital projects. I had to go to several different places, from the basement of Madison, from the fourth-floor penthouse at York, to the super-secret room in the basement of York in the catacombs, to some areas here in the admin building. There's really not a comprehensive place of where all these plans are, and a living There's really not a comprehensive place of where all these plans are and a living electronic document of these plans and everything that we have out there. You'd have to reference a 2013 life safety plan that had some of those details. That's a static plan that's in a basement somewhere where there's a CD. It's not updated on a continual basis. And then also, a lot of this is when we look at the equipment out there, it's anecdotal saying, oh, yeah, we've repaired that boiler five different times. Well, is there any documentation of that? No, there isn't. There's no work orders that are tied specifically back to a piece of equipment. So we can look at the history out there and says, over the last 10 years, we've had 20 work orders on there. Here's how much we put into that piece of equipment to help determine what's the span of that piece of equipment, if we need to replace it ahead of schedule, or we can prolong the life of it. So as we looked at that, to address the first and the fourth items there of some of the issues that I have out there, what we really need to do is establish a baseline of information and use some industry standards of what's the expected lifespan of something from the carpet, from the boilers, from a unit vent, paving, parking, rust, things like that. And we wanted to use this as a springboard to help us develop that long-term maintenance plan for maintaining and improving our facilities. To do that, we kind of look at expected lifecycle. Expected lifecycle is if this flooring right here, this carpet, it could have an expected lifecycle of 10 years, 12 years, 15 years. There's a lot of things that can extend that lifecycle or accelerate it based on the where, based on when it was installed, if it's a high-traffic area, if it's an office that one person's in throughout the course of the day. We're looking at our controls, our unit vents. Unit vents are the individual units in our classroom that provide the fresh air and the temperature controls in there. Looking at getting on a painting cycle, a lot of these things in our district have not been painted. We're looking at a 10-year painting cycle on a lot of our different things, parking lot ceiling, sanding gym floors, bleachers. So these are some of the units that we're looking at here in the district. Now, everything that we looked at was outside of what we put in the facilities master plan. So as we started developing that, we did a detailed inventory of our mechanical equipment throughout the district as best as we could, looked at when that equipment was installed in the district, based off of nameplates or document drawings that we do have. We weren't able to find everything, so we kind of used some of the model numbers, went back through the history, kind of looked at and deciphered the model numbers to get some of that information out there. Kind of what we're looking at when you do an expected lifecycle, this shows our current state of our boilers out there. We have 56 boilers in our district right now, and you can see 41 of them are between that 16 and 25 years. These type of boilers have about a 15-year lifecycle on them. We do have some that are out there to 60 years. Well, those boilers are actually, you know, the boilers we build nowadays and install are not like the boilers that we had 50, 60 years ago. The newer ones are a little bit more temperamental. They have to really be replaced after about 15 years. The future state shows that in the capital plan, just about all the boilers are being replaced. The only boilers that are going to be out there are the ones that in probably 2026 we'll be replacing. Those are boilers that we installed at Hawthorne in the late 2009, I do believe. So if you start looking at that, about 2025, they're going to be 16 years old. So that's how we're sitting there balancing all this stuff as we look at there. So there's a huge investment in the boilers, pretty much. Once we get to 2026, we'll replace some of those boilers at Hawthorne. We'll have to replace some boilers in quite a while, as long as they all work. With the roof area, if you look at this, this is the estimated area, the square footage of all the roofs we have in the district. And the bulk of them right there is in the middle 11 to 15 years. Depends on the type of roof that you put in there, you're going to have usually anywhere from a 15 to 20-year life expectancy on that roof. Also, you have to look at the preventative maintenance that you do on the roof and some other conditions out there. That area right there in the middle, that 11 to 15, that shows within the next 10 years, those roofs are going to be from 21 to 25 years old. So those are the roofs that we're really going to have to be looking at doing over the next few years. So as we look at all this information, it comes back to a 10-year estimated capital needs. That first area there in 2019, this is actually stacked with all the different areas that we're looking at through painting, playgrounds, athletic floors, from bleachers to gym floors to even elevators, as we got to do some routine maintenance on those things, exterior doors, concrete, things like that. That big area in that 2019, that shows of, that's mostly York. A lot of that building was in 2004, based on the recommendations and based on the roof we put in there, they had an estimated lifecycle of 15 years on that building, on that roof. So that shows you, and as a starting point in 2019 is when it's out of its warranty and its expected lifecycle. What I'm saying is, over the next 10 years, that roof probably will have to be replaced. Putting it at 15 years old, we can sit there and say, extend it to 25 or 30 years, but then that's when we start running the risks of deferring that maintenance and having bigger issues within the building of any building when you have your roofs. But this is kind of the basis that we're looking at this, everything right here is based on what's its expected lifecycle and start using that as starting to develop a long-term plan. With this, we have it on average over the next 10 years, based off on all those needs, approximately $3.4 million a year to cover everything out there. Granted, we're not going to sit there and do that $10 million in 2019 all up front. We're going to space some of that stuff out and actually use it in conjunction with some of the other capital plans that we're doing out there and try and do bigger chunks to get some economies of scale instead of doing smaller sections. York is a great example. The more area we can do at one time, the better cost we can get on some of that. I also want to show you some of this that's included in the facilities master plan. This is outside of, you know, library models, additions, and things like that. There is a lot of the stuff that's already included in there with tuck pointing, plumbing, boilers, paving, concrete. So there's a lot of that work that's included in there, but there's a lot of work that still also needs to be done over the next 10 years. When we also look at the maintenance system that we're talking about of developing a plan of how we're going to maintain it moving forward, if you look at the spectrum that we have for maintenance, we're really kind of in the emergency. We do some routine, a little bit of preventive maintenance, but if you look at it overall, it's broke. The building causes, we send somebody out. That's what we're doing constantly. We're not going out to check on that boiler once a week to make sure the fluids are level, make sure it's under pressure, do a preventative maintenance. We're going out to check on that boiler when it's failing. Very low efficiency. We want to get to a higher efficiency, so we're out there, we're checking on things on a routine basis, catch them before they fail, fix them right up front so we don't have the downtime. In order for us to do that, we need to look at another computer maintenance management system and also tying that in with a computer-aided facilities management software system. We want to have a system that's live and interactive. So when we go out there, we have a boiler that has a QR code on it. We scan that code, it pulls it up. It was installed in 1997. Here's all the work orders that we've done on there. Here's what the issues were. Here's how much money we've spent on it so far. So that can help us start doing the predictive maintenance out there. If we're looking at this and this boiler's five years old and we've been out here 50 different times, maybe it's time to replace this boiler. So that gives us a little history on some of our information out there. And then we want to detail the explanation of everything that's in our building. So if we can pull up their maintenance tech with their laptop or their surface tablet or what have you, they can go out to a building, they can look at it, they can click on this classroom. Here's the location of that unit above the ceiling. Here's what, all the details. Here's a picture of it. Everything in our district, so we can look at where our fire extinguishers are located, our cameras, our keyless entry systems, all of our AEDs, everything visualized on different layers on electronic data map, instead of having pieces of paper with them highlighted and multiple ones. It's going to be an interactive, live, real-time, computer-aided facilities management software system. That's something that we're looking at bringing in January as a separate recommendation based off of some of the things that we have been done out there. It's really going to be a detailed of all our assets, all our different flooring types, what every single classroom, what type of flooring's out there, if it's a VCT, LVT, hardwood, carpet, things of that nature. Also, when I was doing some of this analysis out there, not all our building plans are up to date. There's some areas where we've taken down the walls. It's not reflective on our site plans or building floor plans, or we've added a closet somewhere. So part of the process is go through and detail all that, get accurate drawings, put them into the systems, along with the detailed inventory asset. And that will be a recommendation in January as a software system. So we got through all this, and now we're getting into developing the summer capital plan. One thing that we want to show right here and working with the finance department, as we come up there, we want to make sure we have different buckets to keep track of the funding that's coming in with the facilities master plan. Where Fund 60 will be the yearly transfer that we put into the capital from O&M, and 61, 2, and 3 will be the different bond issues. That's going to help us keep track of everything in there as we move forward throughout this process. The capital we plan, sorry, that's just a little bit small. As you can see, it's put up different categories with the different buildings, the estimate we have and the different types of fund. There's some funds up there like Churchville where you see TIF or 61, depending on how we're working on the negotiations, and we're doing some stuff right now with the IGAs. These capital plans also take in consideration of, some of it's part of the facilities master plan, some of it's not, but we're always taking in consideration of all the work we're doing with the full facilities master plan. So as we start developing the stuff at Churchville, we're looking at saying, okay, eventually we're going to tear down the canopy, we're going to be putting an entrance, so make sure we have that in mind. We're going to be putting an auditorium addition on there, so let's do the detention along with the parking lot now. Jackson, in this capital plan, we've got to replace the air handling unit for the gymnasium. We know part of the facilities master plan, we want to add air conditioning to the whole building. All right, what type of unit that we put out here will connect with the new full centralized system, or do we want it to stand alone? We actually decided to have it as a standalone system because a lot of times the gym's going to be used and the rest of the building won't be used. So we are having those conversations with the team, with ICI and with White, as we bring additional stuff in there that's outside of the facilities master plan, to make sure that when everything's said and done, everything meshes together and we don't have standalone systems out there. The end of the day, this is kind of where we're looking at for next year with the different types of plans out there for basically $5.7 million from potentially the first bond issuance, operation capital, and then Churchville, which is up there. That Churchville number is up there, it's maybe a little bit higher than what we had before, but that's based on the first estimates that we have with estimating with White and
Karen?
Todd, I do appreciate that you gave us examples about, you know, you highlighted the summer capital planning as well as the longer term, what's included in the referendum, and how you're going to take into account everything. Even though some of the projects at one given site are going to happen at different stages, they're going to be looked at comprehensively and together as a total package. So I appreciate very much that you highlighted that, just so that, you know, people in our community know just how you're looking at it, which is a great approach. Thanks.
Margaret?
Just going to say, thank you. Clear, concise, comprehensive, wonderful.
Thank you.
Shannon?
I had a question for the routine maintenance. It had a slide that showed 3.4 million on average.
Yes.
And where does that funding come from?
That's something we'll be discussing at the finance meeting in January.
Okay.
Well, we're going to have to transfer those funds from the operations and maintenance fund. So we've started the last few tax levies, increasing the levy to the operations and maintenance fund so we could transfer more than what we were, which was the 1.5 million.
Karen?
So are we saying that our ongoing maintenance is not 1.5, but is 3.4?
We're going to increase it to 3.4 or somewhere in that area, 3 to 3.5 million a year.
And is the rationale because Todd has gone, and his staff have gone through all of the buildings and made an assessment, and based on what we have at all those buildings, that's why it went up? 1.9 million?
Yes, it went up, and also, we were looking at some of the things that typically won't do with concrete. There's money out there for concrete repairs where we were trying to do it internally with our staff. It wasn't working out. This is looking at exterior doors every single year. We're also going to be, as part of this capital needs, is we're going to be doing perimeter checks of the facilities every single spring, and that's going to look at slip trips and falls of any drainage issues, any concrete issues, exterior doors, if they're rusting, they're not working. There's money factored in there, set them out to sit there and go and make sure that we update that every single year as we look at, harden our perimeter with security and risk assessment.
Chris?
Chris, and Todd, the 3.4 average, and then when you break it down into here, a portion of this is coming out of the master facilities plan for each one of these years?
Yeah. On this slide right here, this 3.4 is everything outside of the facilities master plan. We just can't sit there. There's part of it where we're at right now of that, if you look at that 2019, we couldn't do all that right now. And plus, there's a lot of work going to be on here, so we're not doing all full of that 3.4 this first summer.
Right. So how many, so you have 10 million in 19. Of that, you're going to do 5.7 million. Of that, 2.5 is coming out of?
2.5 is if you would be really towards this 3.4.
2.5 is part of the 10? So just take 19.
Mm-hmm.
So the 2.5 that's coming out of the operation capital bucket is against that 10?
Basically, yes. And I think a couple of it's, yes, it's based on that 2019.
So you're taking 7.5 of that and pushing it into other years?
Into other years. And that's why I put that line out there. We're going to try to balance this out as much as possible because part of that, the rust that we're doing this year are a couple of small sections, and those are the rust that are the oldest sections. What I want to do is with York is give us time to develop and do bigger chunks. So hopefully, instead of $6 million, it only costs us $4 million because we're going to do some bigger chunks at a time.
Sure. No, I understand. This is a process I'm familiar with in that just because it's on there doesn't mean it gets done. It means you've got to be prepared to do it.
Exactly. Yes, you are correct.
But still, I mean, to your question, Shannon, we had PMA in January? Yeah, I mean, this is a big nut. So the flip side of that, computer software controls, is that going to, not just catalog stuff, but is it operational side too?
It'll be with?
Do it on and off? I mean?
No, that is, that's going to be a different piece of equipment, which is, thank you for highlighting that. We have it in there as we look at, actually, I should turn around. Can't see that far anymore. Ah, where do I have it? Oh, right here. Update district building automation system, install JAS. As we're looking at that, that's another thing that we're looking at. We really are building controls. There's a lot of control work in the facilities master plan to update it to district standards. We really don't have a standard, so part of this is to update our standards so we're prepared when we start bringing all that work in the facilities master plan. So that is going to be a little bit different from the work order system and the facilities management with our data. This is going to be our building automation system, which?
Well, that's, I mean, well, so, and then that gets to, I mean, we're doing something with our training units on top of our building auditoriums, and it's going to save us a significant amount of money every year in HVAC cost. And so, I mean, imagine if you're going to spend this much a year coupled with the master's facilities plan, there's got to be an impact to the outspend. Chris, no? So I mean, there's, I'm assuming that's not factored in here?
That is not factored. You know, it's kind of hard to figure what that is.
Sure.
But you're absolutely right. On some, our boilers, we've got heat timers where it just turns on and off. So if it's 50 degrees outside, you know?
Right. You look at, how do you get cold and sometimes you?
So now what we get with the new building automation systems that can look at all the different algorithms, what's the outside air temperature, how long does it take to get the building up to speed? So we'll start doing some of that, so we'll reduce some of our energy on there. A lot of this work in there with the controls out there, the buildings, the boilers and all the HVAC units, we are going to be more efficient than what we are right now and some of the energy lighting upgrades.
Lighting, yeah.
With the LEDs, especially if we put the LEDs in the field house along with occupancy sensors.
Sure. Exactly. Right, the ability to turn it off when nobody's moved in there for a while. I mean, those are all things that we're going through too, and I think there's a lot of savings there that is not going to get 3.4 million bucks, but it's something we need to. to think about.
It's a lot. Even with CO2 sensors in the field house or gymnasiums, if there's nobody in there, why bring in cold air when there's nobody in there? Just wait till it's occupied, then actually bring in some of the outside air.
So we're talking about systems that'll do that, that kind of thing?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Excellent. I guess one other question, maybe this is a little bit off, but I mean, alternative energy opportunities, particularly with York with all that roof space?
Well, actually, I was at a conference, Midwest Facilities Masters Conference, last month, talking about potential solar panels. It was actually an individual that lives in York. Come to find out that everybody who lives in York that is a security business, construction business or whatever, coming out of the woodwork.
Pretty much, yeah.
We had some conversations and we're going to look next year to have some of that. That's some of the plans if, sit there and replace the roof, then put those on, because the solar panels, if you actually put them on top of the roof, will extend the life of the roof also. And that's a, you know, we've got 700-plus thousand square feet out there. There's a big roof section out there.
Yeah, and I mean, and there's different models. I mean, I'm putting some on top of a theater where somebody else is paying for them and we just get a 5% reduction in electricity rates or actually a little bit more than that.
And that's some of the things we're looking at.
Kind of who pays for it?
You know, put the LED lights inside the field house and then put a new roof out there and put solar panels on top of that roof that now with the LEDs, you should be able to power everything right there based off the solar panels.
Those kinds of things I think are important from sustainability, not just earth sustainability, but financial sustainability model that we've got to figure out because that's a pretty significant nut. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to ask a question, just, you know, because we're moving to a little bit different model than how it's been. So, you know, you say that, you know, for instance, a boiler, the lifespan is maybe 15 years. Just to clarify, that doesn't mean you're going to replace it necessarily at 15 years. You're just going to prepare the financial outlook so that at the 15-year mark, you're going, that one could fail us. But if we get five more years out of it, you won't replace? Or is it that you will replace it?
We won't replace it, we'll look at it, but that's some of that is we're going to have to look in that 15 years, we're going to look at the data and say, how much work and how much money have we put into the system over the last 15 years? If it's going to, you know, we've put $100,000 into it over the last 10 years and a new one costs $35,000, you know, we're going to look at things like that. So that's why it's important to get the computer maintenance management software up front and get everything identified so we can start tracking all that. We have the unique opportunity. We're putting a lot of equipment into our facilities. We have to have the foundations in up front to make sure we can look at that long-term and get that data we need.
Excellent. And this was excellent.
Thank you.
So, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, let's take a five-minute recess. Next on the agenda is approval of board meeting minutes. Approval of November 27, 2018 minutes and December 11, 2018 minutes. Are there any changes? If not, they stand as presented. And approval of January 10, 2017, January 24, 2017, February 14, 2017, February 28, 2017, March 9, 2017, April 11, 2017, April 25, 2017, May 9, 2017, May 23, 2017, and November 27, 2018, closed session minutes. Were there any changes? They stand as presented. All right. Superintendent's consent agenda. Would anyone like any items taken off? If not, then I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I move we approve the superintendent's agenda, consent agenda, items A through D as presented.
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's, motion passes.
All right, next is superintendent's agenda, action items. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with the city of Elmhurst and/or action on Tiff and Stormwater fee issues with the city of Elmhurst. There will be no action taken tonight, so we move on to approval of resolution for the 2018 certificate of levy.
Okay, so this is, we had the meeting, and so this is the formal approval process. The information is essentially reiterated in the rationale, and so we are asking that you move to approve the levy, and Chris could be available for additional comments at the discussion phase.
I move that we, that the Board of Education approve the resolution for the 2018 certificate of levy.
I'll second.
Discussion, questions? Okay, you call the vote. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's, motion passes.
All right, next is action regarding uniform grievance complaint, appeal regarding athletic fees.
So there was a community member that was questioning our athletic fees, filed a former grievance process that was handled through our grievance officers. We have to point those by law. That was denied. And so at this point, they continue to appeal it following the procedure set forth to the board level. And so at this point, it is your decision to move one way or the other in regard to the recommendation to deny, or perhaps you would choose to either uphold that or you would choose to overturn the administrative's recommendation. So again, if there is further discussion on that, Jim could speak to that during the discussion phase in the motion.
I move that the Board of Education, in accordance with Board Policy 2.260 Uniform Grievance Policy, affirm the superintendent's decision to deny the appeal of the grievance regarding a request for the refund of athletic fees.
I'll second.
Go ahead. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's, motion passes.
Next up, approval of physical education waiver for ninth and 10th graders.
This past fall, with some of the new laws at the state level, we were asked to bring to you a recommendation that would allow freshman and sophomore students to access physical education waivers during their participation season. We went back to the high school administration. They worked through some planning on what they would have to do in order to make that possible, and so the recommendation is before you as to what they would, how they would implement that beginning with the 1920 school year. And as, and I'm enjoying this here, if there are questions on this during the discussion phase, Dr. Cohen is prepared to address anything you may have.
Me, yeah. I move that the Board of Education approve the plan for the physical education waivers for ninth and 10th graders as presented.
I second that motion.
All right, discussion?
If I could just lead off. We had extensive hearing. When was it? Last, over a year ago? Over a year ago, when the law was first changed. Extensive public participation at the meeting. We kind of, throughout the rules, had an open discussion that went on for a couple hours. We heard a lot, a lot of points of view were expressed, and we brought that information back to the board. And then we were asked to hold off a little bit so that we could hear from the people who actually have to implement what the policy change would bring about, and they put together this. I don't really have any comments about the implementation that's before us, but have very strong feelings about in support of the motion that we change the policy to allow families to do what they feel is best for their child, their student, in terms of reducing the burden. And this ties in exactly with what you said before, Dave, about dealing more with, how did you phrase it?
I may have used the term behavioral health because that's what we've been using, but?
Behavioral health. And again, central to student engagement as determined by the families, very much in support of this, this change in policy, to let this expand to freshmen and sophomores.
Margaret.
Yeah, this is a discussion point, and this is highlighted in the document, but could you walk through, Dr. Cohen, the plan for the study halls and when they're going to take place and how that'll be managed? I think that's important because this is going to be a big change for both expectations for the parents as well as for the school. So could you walk through some of those particular points?
Sure. There are a few things to highlight in terms of implementation. Overall, the students that elect to take a study hall as a part of their day, not as a waiver for physical education, but choose not to take a seven-period day with a lunch, those study halls are going to be concentrated during the first hour of the day and the last hour of the day. And our upperclassmen will be given the option of doing a late arrival. We've talked a little bit about start times in relation to, you know, student well-being, or an early dismissal for those students who, you know, are coming in, getting their classes knocked out and may have a job after school. So those students that, that is really the most substantial change to study halls. The athletic study halls will not change. Those will still be offered all eight periods of the day because we're scheduling PE all eight hours of the day, and so we can't make any substantial changes to a student's schedule when they, you know, enter and exit their seasons. So those will remain. Some other things that are worth noting, PE waivers for athletics do not happen in the first two weeks of school. That's due to fitness testing, that was in the memo. We are going to try with our freshmen and sophomores, we're going to make sure that we double back and make sure they have a swim unit because we do believe it's a valuable skill that all students need to, you know, have those basic, the basic ability to, you know, tread water and maneuver in the water for safety. One of the questions that may come up, because freshmen and sophomores don't have PE for the full two years. They have health as a part of their, part of their curriculum, and they also have driver's education. We don't know in advance when a student might elect to go out for a fall sport or a winter sport or a spring sport. Those decisions can be made, you know, right before school begins. So it is impossible for us to set up an academic schedule where students are in health class first semester, PE second semester, and then that student would come in and say, I want to be, I'm going to be running cross-country this year. And so that's a fall sport, but I have health. Can I switch health and PE, switch my classes so that I can take advantage of the PE waiver in that first semester? Logistically, that's just something we cannot handle, and most schools, most high schools with these waivers do not attempt to handle. The scheduling will be done by power school, and when the students, you know, if the students elect to participate in a fall, winter, or spring sport, if they are in PE, they can come out, if that, they are in driver's ed or if they are in health, that schedule will stand. So it is, it's not as open where juniors and seniors can have those options all the way through both years. And finally, students cannot have two study halls in their schedule. So if we already have a hard study hall scheduled in there where a student is, you know, proceeding, where they're, they have more than enough credits, they're on track to graduate, and they already have a study hall built in, even if they're participating in PE, we're not going to build in a second study hall because if you have a study hall and another study hall and a lunch, now they're only in five classes, only 250 minutes a day, which, you know, prior to state changing the law, was not, was not a full-time student. So that caveat is put in there as well. So there, those are just some logistical pieces that go with the implementation, but otherwise the supervision details have all been worked out.
Thank you.
Karen. So these sorts of things, one, are going to be communicated to the counselors because the counselors really do the scheduling with the students, but also communicated to the students and parents, right? So that they're well aware of this?
They have a communication that's set for Friday, pending the outcome of the board meeting today, and I don't know if that, maybe you can help me. That may have been just the internal communication to the faculty, but there is, there is going, well, I know one person who lives in my house who has already heard this rumor about, oh no, that was the final exam exemption. Let me tell you that, that was a very popular thing. But the, but my guess, I do know there's a communication ready to go on Friday internally, and so probably you need to work with them if they haven't contacted you already about the external piece.
It's worth noting that half of the students that this particular change applies to are not yet in York High School.
Yeah, with that in mind, I think, I appreciate the message going out now, and I think it's going to have to go out often because people are going to forget all of the caveats and just hear the waiver, and there might be expectations that can't be met.
And it could, it could affect class choices? Is that, yes?
I don't think so because this would be going to a study hall. They're not substituting another academic class for this.
But they might choose to not take a study hall, right?
Potentially, but I, there are not a large amount of freshmen this year that we see doing that because of the, not running the world studies class in summer school to free that slot up.
Okay. All right, anything else? This is, thanks for the detailed information about how this is going to be implemented. So it's really thorough and also protects good things for students, so thank you for that. John.
I just read the motion that I seconded. It doesn't quite say exactly what I said. We need to change the policy. Policy manual provision doesn't provide for this, so there needs to be a companion piece. It needs a couple of readings, and perhaps we can have that since we've already had the policy committee move with a, move it to the full board for opinion. We've got a policy that doesn't have PE waivers for ninth and 10th grades, so we have to change that in conjunction with this.
Okay, so I do believe I was asked to bring this back to the full board. Now, I thought, so, so we can, we can, we can obviously amend the policy or whatever, however we want. The question I'm wondering is, do we need to amend this motion in order to pass this? Because the planning of the staffing and the implementation piece starts, you know, in the spring semester, and so that was part of why I said I would bring this back in November. in November or December. And I thought that our policy allowed it. We just, I thought, I thought our policy allowed it, John.
I guess I should have read this before we came.
Regardless, you can't, we can't amend policy here, anyway. So we can support the motion, which will put you on record, but then you have to go through a process to amend policy if indeed it needs to be amended. So you guys can bring that back to us.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you amend the motion to indicate that you would like the policy to be amended to reflect this, then I think we would be okay going forward.
I just suggest we amend the motion to say that the Board of Education approved the plan for physical education waivers for ninth and 10th grades as presented, subject to amendments of applicable policies authorizing such change.
So can I amend my motion and do what he said? Without, I don't remember, you said it well, but do I have to do that because it's my motion?
Did your president's school tell you how to do this, Karen?
You're making this so complicated. Okay, so the motion on the floor is the initial motion that was made. So we need to amend...
Yes, you, the cleanest thing, the cleanest thing to do...
I move to amend my motion.
Yes.
Yeah, I move to amend my motion to say what John just said. Well, you have to tell me what it was. Right, exactly, but just tell me what it is and I'll say it.
But no, just you have to amend the motion.
I, I am making, I move to amend to say...
That the Board of Education approved the plan for the physical education waivers for ninth and 10th graders as presented, subject to board approval...
Board approval.
...of necessary policy changes required to implement such plan.
Of necessary policy changes required to implement such plan.
That's my...
I do.
Second, the amended motion. Discuss? Discuss the amended motion, or any other discussion on the amended motion. Okay. We just vote on the amended motion, right? Yeah, we only vote on the amended motion. So we're ready to vote. Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes.
All right. Approval of study skills instructional programs stipends funded by the District 205 Foundation.
This is something that the foundation has annually supported. I'm not sure of the history as to how long, but they provide stipends for teachers to provide additional support to students at the building level. You have approved it before. We do like to put it on the agenda to recognize some of the various different things that the foundation supports. This donation this year is $15,000, and some of the specific information actually is in the rationale. Some of the buildings change each year. It's more predominant now that we have interventions formalized at the middle school level, that this takes place predominantly at several of our elementary school sites. And, let's see here, so it's $14,537 this year, it looks like. But I think that they're asking for approval of $15,000 because they get a little bit of variance in that amount when you start to take a look at the materials that they purchase periodically, depending on the need to the students.
I move that the Board of Education approve the award of up to $15,000 for the 2018-2019 Study Skills Academies as funded by the District 205 Foundation. I second the motion. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, Dave, based on your comment, I guess I have a question. Do we need to review the study skills and potentially alter it based on what we're implementing throughout the school day?
My personal opinion is yes. I think that at the elementary school level now, we're in our second year of a formalized system where we have time allocated within the school day for interventions. You know that we flexibly regroup the students. This was approved this past year. It's been a longstanding tradition. I personally think that there are, that it is time for us to take a look at working with the foundation as to whether or not there are some other ways that if they want to support interventions and/or some of our other types of innovative programming, that maybe we ask that question. I'm personally in agreement with you on that.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because like, the executive functioning skills and all are very valid, but, yeah, we need to make sure that we are not hitting the same students with the same things, and not, and kind of disengaging them, you know what I'm saying? Because I know that my daughter was in some of those study skills, and it was, it was a delicate balance to help her with the confidence. And so if we're, if we're approaching those students twice, we need to be really sensitive to how they're receiving that information, that it's additional help, but they don't always see it that way. And we don't always, we don't always understand how they are internalizing it. And so I want to be really sensitive. We are very appreciative of what the foundation's doing, so I really don't want this, the comments, you know, to say that we're not, we don't want that, because we're, we support the foundation, we support study skills, really important. I just want to be sensitive to how we, how we interact with the students, because that is so important. The confidence level and the way that they internalize when we offer them additional support, we need to, we need to be conscious of it.
Well, yeah, I think I would review an overall instructional philosophy. You know, whenever possible, we want the interventions to be occurring within the general education setting. That's not always possible, but when it is possible, that's what, that's the preference. Secondly, intervention should be for all students, not, you know, sometimes you have various factors when interventions are outside of the school day, where not every student that is able, or that needs additional support can access it. So you want them to occur during the school day, whenever possible. And so a lot of these, you know, this program was an attempt to be very supportive at a time when we didn't have some of the other structures in place that we currently have. And so I do agree that we should, we now have our learning and teaching committee people are on the front end of the grant approval recommendation process, and I think that we are gradually, each year, helping coach on some of the different types of things that can best support our curriculum. So I would expect that that is, is an area that we would probably look at in the future as our systematic approach to interventions for all students continues to be refined and improved.
Anything else? Okay, go ahead. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes.
All right, last is the approval of donation.
So this one is pretty simple, I think, and that is the Hawthorne PTA is offering to donate $700 to purchase speakers and, with stage monitors for the school, and is requesting that you approve that.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from the Hawthorne School PTA, in the amount of $700 to purchase speakers with stage monitors. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I second. Okay, any discussion?
Say thank you to the ever-generous Hawthorne PTA for their, I mean, continued generosity to Hawthorne School. Thank you.
Go ahead. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, motion passes.
All right, superintendent's communication, freedom of information requests.
One freedom of information request was received, requesting specific emails, which was partially granted and partially denied. And then that brings us to our tweet of the week.
If you're taking a look at the screen or in your notes, we, our tweet of the week goes to Peter Ritchie, who is our Project Lead the Way instructor, teacher at Churchville Middle School. The tweet says, "Very grateful for the wonderful opportunity to have Mrs. Karowski from @EasterSealsDFVR to offer feedback for students, or on students, at PLTW.org Therapeutic Toy Designs. #CommunityConnections, @ChurchvilleD205, #WeAreChurchville, #IgniteD205." Congratulations to Peter Ritchie, and always for the wonderful work that Project Lead the Way continues to do, and introduce our kids to some very wonderful aspects of education and the world.
Some of you got a, well, you all got, you all got an email from me. I don't know if you read through the whole email, but you all got an email from me that Tom Murray, who wrote the book with Eric Schenninger, Learning Transformed, put out a tweet where he recognized Ignite D205 as a creative social media, you know, was highlighting the schools around the country that were doing a good job trying to tell their story through social media. And there were, I think, 26 districts when I counted them, but approximately. And he identified the Ignite D205 as, as a very successful and creative program. And our communications department was, if you recall, when we talked about the Inspira Awards, was recognized for that, getting that program off the ground. So I thought that that was kind of nice, to be noticed nationally for some innovative things that we're doing, so.
Nice work. Okay, board communications, do any board members have any reports or information to share with the board? All right. Upcoming, we have three scheduled upcoming meetings. Tuesday, January 8th, 2019, regular Board of Education meeting here at District 205 Center, 7:30. Thursday, January 10th, 2019, Finance Committee meeting at 6:30 here in District 205 Center. And Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting here in District 205 Center at 7:30. And with that, I will call the meeting adjourned.